What about you?
I'm muted now from the computer thing to Skype or whatever it's called.
Oh, so he's not going to amend?
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, December the 18th, 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting. Let me introduce everyone at the table. We have, to my far left, we have Town Administrator Rebecca Oldham, Selectwoman Kathy Castren Ellis, Jason's here. Jason's on Zoom. Hi, Jason. Jason Naaves, Selectman. Mark Borrento, Edward Watson. I'm Daniel McDonald. Please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Left, to the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord.
First up, we have public comment. Do we have anyone this evening? We don't. Discussion impossible vote. First up, Quick Auto Center Corp., Class II Auto License, Request for Additional Vehicles, Luciano Quintanilla. Come on up, sir. Why don't you come up to the podium and... Good evening. Welcome. You were here at the last meeting. And what do you have for us? Updates? Are you waiting on us? Rebecca, what did we find out in terms of the legal requirements on a public hearing or not?
So I did consult with town council, and there is no requirement that there be a party notification or public hearing advertised if the permit is already in existence, and they are just looking to amend the permit. It would only be required if it was a brand-new application and/or if it was a Class III license, not a Class II license.
So how many additional vehicles are you requesting?
Twenty.
Twenty? And that was for the rear of the property, which was formerly used for towed vehicles, correct?
Yes.
And that space could, I guess, hold 20 vehicles before?
Yes.
So there's no expansion of the existing footprint?
No. It's just, it's just basically, we took the part that was selected to the yard and put just the fence down and fixed the floor, the ground, because there's no pavement or anything. We just, we just make it even, the same, nothing was used, no pavement yet. But and we, we put, I put some pictures on the application with cars, so you can have an idea that will fit the 20 spaces that we're requesting. Just making sure the cars that are on the pictures, there's not for sale yet. It's just for, it's to verify that the space will fit the 20 spaces that we're requesting.
All right. And there was some concern at the last meeting about repaired vehicles and a burned vehicle in particular.
Yeah, actually, on the last meeting, I wasn't with the diagram in front of me, but we have, let me just double-check here. I have six, I have like four spaces for customers, and I also have on the, on the right side of the plate, six extra spaces, parking spaces that was not accounted, I forgot to mention on the last meeting when we asked for the, for the spaces for customers. And like we, I mentioned last time, if, if it granted to us the spots, the extra spots, we're gonna reduce our repair shop hours, service, to be focused more on the dealer instead, like repair and collision.
All right. Any issues, Kathy?
No, I just, this is a lot, much better information. Thank you. And also, I've observed, you know, just driving by, that you've done a lot of cleanup work on the property, and it does look improved and cleaned up. So you have the six, the A1 through sixes customers, and then C1 through four? What's A1 through?
C1 through four, those are the customers of parking spots. I apologize.
That's okay.
I'm not used to speaking publicly, and I kind of, I apologize.
Oh, that's all right. Explain.
The spots, C1 to C4, it's designated for customers.
Okay.
That's what we, what's, it's more, where usually people, I think they use to, all customer used to park when they come to the property, like a lot of people, it's no, used to come to the, to the business. And the EP1 to the EP6, there'll be like extra spots that we, for now, we don't have, like not designing, designate any use for, but that is still available for parking.
Mark?
So?
Are you done? I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just trying to, so you said six additional customer spots. That's what I was, I was saying.
No, no, I did not say that. I have extra spots.
Okay.
I said, extra parking.
Those are the extra spots?
Yes.
Okay. And so?
So there could be customers, could be like temporary cars that will be moved down. So far, we do not have like a proper designation for those spots.
Okay.
Unless for one, one spot that where the tow truck will be.
Okay. And the employees, just one through three spots?
Yeah. They'll be on the side of the building where we kept the collision cars.
Oh, and then the EP is extra parking again. A is the original spots, and EP is the extra parking.
Yes.
I'm getting it now. Okay. Okay. And 1 through 20 is what you're requesting right now?
Yeah. The B1 to B20, it's the, like, the picture that I took, that's where we positioned the cars, just to make sure, before requesting like 20 spaces, we, we were able to exactly fit the cars there and open the doors to make sure if the, a customer come to, to get inside the car, to buy a car, they will be able to open the door with the 20 cars parked and go inside, you know, like, we'll be able to serve the customers. And we still have like the fire landscape, the designated area in the middle, that's all dealers are request in case of fire or anything.
Okay.
So I know that all dealers are request, like, not put cars in front of each other. They need to have a space for fire truck.
I understand.
I already looked that up before, tried to design the layout for the parking.
Okay. So in your conversion to more of a car sales business, right, you had, the original was just A1 to A6? Is that what you're?
Yes.
Those were the cars he was trying to sell?
That's why we have it now. Like, we only have available six spots to sell at the time. And that's why we use the collision center more often in the repair than we wish to.
Right. So you need to be allowed to use those spots in the back to sell cars? That's what you need to be allowed?
Yeah. If, if we do have that, if, if the town agrees to give us the spots, yes, we're gonna convert the space we have as a, a sailing, a sales.
To sale, to a sales plot, right?
Yes. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's all right. I'm just trying to make sure I understand. Thank you. Appreciate that.
But if not, we probably gonna go back with the original plan and have the tow yard there and, you know.
Okay. So, so the 1 through 20 would be a nicer look than the tow yard for the neighbors?
Yeah. Will be less crash at cars and, you know.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mark?
No, I just visually, it will definitely be better than the impound lot, having, you know, the sales area. So I think that will be an improvement. But I do feel there is still a lot more that needs to be cleaned up around the building. Other than that, I really need that much.
Yeah. I went up there, because I buy this place a couple times a day. I went up there, drove through the lot this morning, and the area where the additional parking, that's, that's hot top, that's been, been lined like it's supposed to be. But a couple questions. On this, on this map, did you leave these, these six cars that are out front for sale?
Mm-hmm.
There's two parking spaces behind them. I don't see it noted on the, on the map.
Oh, yes. Those are painted before. It, it's been painted like since when we still have the tow yard on the back. So it's, it's used like sometimes just as a fire lane, you know, like, if we do have the spaces available, we're gonna take those away.
You're gonna take them all?
Yeah.
Okay. And to the right side of the building, when you, we're here a couple weeks ago, I noted that all the junk around the building, on the right-hand side of the building, up against the wall there, there's, there's a whole mess of tires there. It's, that, that's a junkyard in the right and in the, in the back. And you're not licensed for a junkyard. You're licensed for, for six spots for used car and auto repair. But I've gone by there, and you're cutting vehicles up there, and, which is, which you're not allowed to do. That's, that's a junkyard. And you're not, you're not licensed, as I said, for a junkyard. And I, I'm gonna oppose it until the right side of the building is cleaned up and you can actually access it through there.
Okay.
I just don't think, I don't think you're ready for it.
Okay. I understand that we are not licensed for junkyard. We do not do that. We've been trying to clean that place for like two years. It's not been easy. When we took over, there was a whole 20-foot yard trailer in the back of the building, full of tires and pieces of car, like, like broken bumpers and fenders. We've been trying to clean that place, but you have to understand, it's a lot of money to pay someone to take all at once. We've been trying, we've been throwing away those pieces, the tires. It's, some of them we change during the, this period, but most of the time, we, we already have like six, seven times, people, we pay a company to come with a, with a, with a box truck to take away tires, you know? I understand. It's, we're trying to clean as much as we can, but it's too much to do at once. Even like, the guy who came, he came, he said, "I cannot do, I cannot take out the tires you have at once." He, he couldn't pick it up. We're trying to throw away as much as we can. Listen, I understand, but we're trying to do as, as much as we can.
When, when you purchased the building, did you get an environmental impact study?
I have to check. I do not have the information for that. Because when we took over the building, there was like a bunch of drums of oil on the back that we have to take that away, too. We had a complaint that there was leaking, but there was no leaking. There was someone from the state visit us about that. And all those drums was already there before, when we took over. And we trying to take, clean one thing at a time, you know? It was like, we have like a container there with probably two, two, 250 gallons of used oil that we have to dispose, you know? And companies, they charge us to throw that away. It's not something, I know it's fresh, but they don't take that away. Some companies charge like us more than a clean oil, a gallon of clean oil to pick it up. I called one of the companies. They, they want to charge me $25 per gallon of the used oil. That's ridiculous, you know? It's more than we can charge from a customer for a quarter for like a, a clean synthetic, if you understand. So it's, I know that for you from outside, looks like we're probably not doing anything, but all this year, we're trying to do, deal with things in a little bit at a time. I understand. It's, it's a lot of money that we have to, to put just to throw things away, you know? It's not, it's not even an investment, you know? I apologize if the place does not look clean as we wish to and as we, the city wished to, but it's, it's something that was there before we even got there, you know?
Yeah. And in addition to the tires and the, there's, there's old car parts. In fact, there was a white door that was leaning up against there today.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
What's your, what's your point?
My point is that we have before us a permit for a business, and it sounds like one member of our board went and did some form of an inspection of the business, and I wasn't aware that that was what we were all going to do. If we were going to do a site walk, we should have done that as a board, to be fair. At least a quorum of us should have been present to do the site walk. So I don't, I live just around the corner from this facility. I did not stop and walk around it because I understand in my role as one member of the Board of Selectmen, I'm not empowered to walk into a business's property and start walking around and seeing whether I do or don't like something on it.
All right.
Is that correct? I mean, I'm just, I'm asking. I'd like to redirect the conversation to the permit.
I can respond to that.
No, I'm asking the chairman.
Well, here's the thing. I see it as we're here on a narrow issue. It sounds to me like you want to swap all 20 spaces in the rear and re-characterize those as retail sale of vehicles, right?
Yes.
And maybe wholesale. But you want to be able to use those as, specifically for that. So that's the narrow issue that's before us tonight, whether or not there's any code violations or environmental violations. I don't believe that's properly before us this evening.
No, there's no environment.
I understand that concern, you know? Maybe that's another issue for another day. It sounds like you inherited this, and you're chipping away at it. Environmental cleanup is a horrendous cost. I understand, you know, it's, you know, cradle to grave on cleanups. I mean, you own it if you're on title. If you have waste oil, there's ways of getting rid of it. Some garages will burn it to heat their garages. Maybe you can talk to a few mechanics that have a, a legal, you know, burner that might be able to get rid of some of that used waste oil. But that's, that's not before us this evening. And maybe we can address that at another point in time. Can I, can I ask, Rebecca, is this an annual renewal on the license?
Yes. They, they already received their annual renewal from the Board of Selectmen. This is a request that came in after the renewal process for the additional spots. So the license specifies that they're only able to have six on-site. So once they received their license, they wanted to expand that, so that requires them to be placed on a scheduled meeting with the Board of Selectmen for discussion and vote by the board.
So if we were to approve that, would that be, does it lapse out on a fiscal year basis, like June 30th, or is it a year from today? How does that work?
So the renewal process, all of the licenses are, end January 1st, 2024, and the new license will take effect until December 31st, 2023. Well, next year would be the 2024, and a start on 2025.
And this application is specific to just adding more spaces?
So the, the time period would still be the same as all the other licenses with this annual and on December 30th, 31st, and January 1st.
All right. I'll give Ed a chance to respond. I'm gonna ask you a question, Ed. Whether or not there's any other issues relative to their business, how does that, how does that come into play and whether or not they just want to re-characterize 20 spaces for retail sale of automobiles?
Well, first of all, I didn't do a site walk. I did, I drove by the place, which anybody on the board doing their due diligence could see just what I did, just by driving by the business. And I, something that I've done, as when I've been on the Board of Selectmen, is I try to become familiar with the articles that are coming before the board. If you drive by, you take a look at it, you, for the same thing, Kathy, that you at one point wanted to do a drive-by at some, it was a request for streetlight, and you weren't familiar with it.
Listen, I apologize. We are more than welcome than if any of you guys want to show up at our business and ask us questions. I'll be more than happy to answer all the questions and show you all the business and everything that we've done. We're not like, we're not hiding anything, you know? I'll, I'll be more than helpful if any one of you guys stop by and grab a car with me. I'll be happy to have you guys over there, you know, and show everything we've done. I, I don't want this to be an issue, you know? If, if the city has a concern about anything on the property, I will listen to, you know? I don't want that to be an issue. If, if anyone wants to go there and take a look, it's, I will welcome, okay? It's, I don't want this to be an issue.
I'm off, sir.
All right. I mean, I, I, I don't think it's before us tonight on any compliance issues in terms of environmental matters. I don't know that we have jurisdiction over those issues anyways. I'm not an environmental, only an advocate, I guess. But appreciate what you're doing. You inherited the problem, and if you could clean it up over time, chip away at it. You probably don't have a blank check where you could just write a check and make it all go away. So, you know?
No.
Clean it up over time. But I just, you know, I think we gotta move the issue, Kathy.
Yep. I just, I know a person who lives in the neighborhood felt that the property has been improved upon, and they were very happy that you're cleaning it up.
We have a lot of, if you, if you guys would like, I can make a list of all the customers who come over there and say, "Wow, you cleaned up this place. This place looked better than before." Some people, like, old customers, they say, "Oh, this, this being an improvement." If you like, I can request our customers to sign up, like, I don't, I don't think that I need to like that, but if you do, I can request, I feel the customer, even the neighbors, the neighbors, if you're the neighbors that around our property, they can give a recommendation. They can, I can ask them to tell you if you are improving or not the, the facility, you know, the property around.
All right. I, I think you know what you need to do.
So make a motion to approve?
The expansion of?
Yes.
Did Jason want to weigh in?
Oh.
We forgot about you.
Jason, the invisible man. Jason, sorry, no disrespect. Can you hear me, Jason?
I can. Can you hear me?
All right.
Yes.
You have the floor, or the air. I don't know where you are.
I know. I've driven by the place, and it's been vastly improved. And one of the biggest steps to continue that improvement is to allow them to use the 20 spots and get away from the auto repair and the body shop. Because when you have the body shop, you're gonna have cars there that are chopped up and waiting for parts. That's, that's the nature of the business. You're gonna have old parts around. I mean, we can look around at some of the other auto body shops that we have in town, and they look pretty horrific, especially in some of the areas that some people might not think are very noticeable. So I wouldn't hate to tie their hands into making something that's a little bit better for the community and for that particular neighborhood. And I know, after personally dealing with a customer complaint and speaking with Sam, that they're very willing to work with the town and the neighbors to make improvements and to keep the property up and always make it look nice. So I look forward to them continuing to make improvements and doing business with them.
All right. Y'all set?
Yep.
Thank you. Kathy, want to move your question?
Yes. So the motion is to increase the allowable vehicles from display in their license from six to 26, according to the parking plan that they provided with, for us.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
We have to do roll call. We have to do roll call, because he's on Zoom. Whenever one member's...
All right. So people know, I'm being told, informed, we need to do a roll call because Jason is...
Remote.
He's in exile. All right. So roll call. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Edward?
No.
Okay. Well, we have four in favor, one opposed. Good luck. Keep up the good work, and just chip away.
Okay, thank you.
That's all anyone could ask. Thank you.
All right.
License is approved for the expansion. Number two, Greater Amesbury Public Health Excellence Group Intermunicipal Agreement, IMA, for Public Health Excellence for Shared Services Grant. That's a very long title. Continuation from December the 4th, 2023 meeting. Who's gonna, who's gonna run with this?
I would do that, Mr. Chair. So essentially, the Board of Health Chair and the health agent had come before the board to discuss the opportunity to participate with some other partners here in the Merrimack Valley for this particular agreement. The board had requested that the agreement be reviewed by town council. There was some language that we weren't exactly sure about. Town council reviewed the contract that was being proposed and that the board was being asked to sign. They said they didn't necessarily see an issue with the agreement itself, but that it did not list out the project scope or what services the town would be getting in return. And it didn't really necessarily reference an IMA. It was almost as though it was more of a commitment or an agreement to participate in the program. And so town council just advised that we get some better understanding of exactly what those services would be, that we would be receiving from this agreement, and then to check in with them if they understand that the language proposed doesn't reflect what you would typically see in an intermunicipal agreement. So I did share that with both David and Rosemary and their contact over at the Mass Association of Health Boards, and they...
What are their last names, if I can stop you?
David Greenbaum and Rosemary D.C.
Thank you.
And they are looking to bring that back to their group and get some clarification before they give us an answer. So we would look to remove this from the agenda, and then as soon as they make contact, we would add it back to a meeting for further discussion.
So Kathy, we should probably table, or you want to?
I wanted to add a couple of questions to that list. If it's, unless this is...
You want to add to the list of services?
Of questions.
Oh.
On the agreement. So in item number four, under the Shared Services Coordinator, this person would be based in the City of Amesbury, and it says, "It may or may not be the City of Amesbury Director of Public Health." I assume that's a full-time position in Amesbury. I would ask if that's a full-time position. And it says that they'll perform all the necessary duties and be paid 15% of the funds received through the grant program. There's no mention of hours that would be, additional hours that would be worked. And then there's no mention of how much money is involved. I'd like to know the amount of money involved and the additional hours, like what's, what are we paying for? Because if it's already a full-time position and we're just giving them more work... a full-time position and we're just giving them more work, I'm not quite sure how that pans out.
Did you say what are we paying for?
You know, it says they're going to get 15% of the funds received through the grant.
Who's that?
To the, may or may not be the Director of Public Health in Amesbury. And I'm asking, is that a full-time position? First off, is that director job already a full-time position?
So they're adding comp? Is that what that says?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure whether they're adding hours to it, but they're adding money to the position. I'm asking how much money are we adding?
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, are they just given a pay raise with no additional workload? Seems like there might be more work. Who knows?
Right. And then, what section is this? Under number seven, under paragraph, paragraph five, they told us this wouldn't cost anything. And it says, "It is the intention of the City of Amesbury to seek additional grant funds to sustain these services. But if that is unsuccessful, participating municipalities will revisit this agreement and determine whether they will allocate municipal funds to continue participation." But it doesn't say who in the municipality would make this decision. So who would make this decision in our municipality that we want to allocate additional funds to this contract because the grant funds have stopped? It doesn't say. It does say a mutually acceptable written contract amendment would be required. Who is it mutually acceptable?
It could be binding on us too. So what are we signing?
Well, I know that the Board of Health is somewhat, was the word, is it autonomous? They stand separate. So I didn't know if it would be all under their jurisdiction or our jurisdiction or
It wouldn't be the Board of Health. The Board of Health does not have the authority to enter into contracts on behalf of the municipality.
Okay.
So it would be the Board of Selectmen in a town meeting.
Okay. And then in, number 12, under withdrawal, if you decide to withdraw, it says withdrawal requires the vote of both the Select Board and the Board of Health. Upon withdrawal, the Shared Services Coordinator will prepare full statements of outstanding unpaid financial obligations under this agreement. Well, if it's funded by a grant, how can we owe any money? That's my question. How can we owe them anything if we want to withdraw? This was presented as a no-cost endeavor and I'm not sure if
Supposed to be a no-brainer on freebies and it sounds like it's possibly we're creating a new bureaucracy under a contractual agreement and then we need the Board of Health to agree with us. And if we're, if we're the ones that decide to enter into it, then we should be the ones to be able to get out of it. No one else. So why?
Why would we have any unpaid financial obligations?
Why give the Board of Health the authority over a binding contract where we might have to commit enough public funds? You know what I'm saying? I don't agree with it. It's a great question, Kathy, but I, I think that
That's my question.
I think, I think that's non-negotiable in my opinion. Delete.
Well, I like the idea of shared services. Don't get me wrong. I think across all these towns
Yeah, but who makes the decision? I mean, this is, this is, you know, who, who has the right to contract? You know? And, and nothing against the Board of Health, but
So is that question on the list too?
It's just, what are they doing? It muddles the water. I mean, you need two government agencies to approve the contract or to get out of the contract?
So I mean, technically, you're reviewing the contract because you have the authority to sign the contract. Otherwise, the Board of Health would have already entered into the contract without moving forward.
What do they need us for? Right.
But they, but they do because they don't have the authority to enter into a contract. So that's why they're not listed as a signatory on the contract because they don't have the ability to.
So why would they add language that if we want to get out of the contract or maybe not renew it, that we need the approval of the Board of Health? I mean, i- if we're the binding authority, then it ought to be on the in and the out. I mean, why would, why would you give someone else the authority to stop you from undoing what you signed? It just, it just seems like wrong. Anything else, Kathy?
No, that was, that was kind of it. I just, I just feel like if this can be revisited and this agreement changed a little bit, so it's more, to clarify, who is the contracting authority? And upon withdrawal, why would we owe any money? Says we have unpaid obligations.
Well, I think that goes back to the question as to what services we're getting in exchange for the agreement. So if, you know, there's a reimbursement type process, I'm not sure how the grant is structured, but sometimes what will happen is you'll end up paying for the, the service upfront and then you get reimbursed. So is there enough monies left over as the contract to cover those expenses? So I think that's just a catch-all, but I don't know the structure of the grant. So I'd have to look into it a little bit more fully. But sometimes that does happen with grants where you'll overexpend based upon reimbursements and the way that the services are provided throughout the construction of a project or the service agreement, et cetera.
Okay. But again, the lead municipality is going to maintain separate, accurate and comprehensive records of all services performed, but it never once says that we're going to be provided copies of such. It just seems like it's a separate agency doing its thing in that we're being asked to approve it, but we don't really have authority to understand what they're doing.
And how, how the services are allocated amongst the, you know, I mean, can they, can they play favorites? Or, you know, is Groveland gonna get their, you know, allocated fair share or, you know, it's, we're just basically signing over a contract to give someone else authority over public services and we lose control? I don't like it. I think it's a poison pill on that structure. I don't like it. You know, and if, if they front the cost contractually, we're obligated and, you know, they're, you know, they're counting their birthday money before their birthday, you know? It's like the, the school district, they have a circuit breaker credit. So they, they front the money and they hope the state funds. Well, you just, you can't control what other people do often. It's wishful thinking and you can get trapped doing that, you know? You assume you're gonna get paid and you know what happens to you when you assume. So it's defective. It's not how it was sold. It's like, oh, you know, we get this free money. It's like, you know, Santa Claus is coming to town, you know? It's, it's not Santa Claus. Santa Claus in a wolf's clothing in my opinion. Ed?
I'm off, Ed.
Mark?
Just so you know, Santa Claus is coming to town, you know?
He is coming to town. Put him on two fire trucks at the same time.
So then, may I please clarify the questions, the additional questions that Kathy, the Selectman McCaslin has posed. So one, is it a full-time position? How much money is being allocated and what are the hours associated with the position? Additional funding for the ability to sustain the program? Who makes that decision? Withdrawal from the contract? Money owed? Authority to leave the contract and the authority to contract? And when, and whether or not the other participating members would be provided copy of the financial records kept by the City of Amesbury?
Right. I mean, and Dan's point, I think you have it, you just made it shorthand. Is it that for us to leave it, we need a vote of the Board of Health and us? Why would that be? For the contracting authority, can't we just say no?
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Long, not an
I think you're right.
Good question.
My, I don't feel many questions. I have issues though, okay? They get the grant money and then they spend it. They don't spend the money and then get the grant money. So it's, you know, which came first, you know? So that needs to be revised. If they don't have it, they can't spend it, in my opinion. And Groveland shouldn't be on the hook for a penny. Okay? But it's, it's, it's a poison pill to me that you sign a contract and you spend money and hoping somebody reimburses you. Let's just stop. Okay? Wait for the money, then have a strict budget and don't, don't spend more than you have or your bounce checks. You get in trouble for that. So if they can address that issue and revise it, maybe I'll support it. But if they don't, I tell you right now, I'm not signing anything that's on, I count your birthday money before your birthday.
Jason hasn't spoken.
Huh?
Jason.
Keep forgetting Jason. Jason, speak up.
I certainly do like the idea of shared services. However, I don't think they know the answers to these because I think they're pretty new at trying to put this together. So it's something that they have to work with and work through. So maybe, maybe if we can help them work through some of these issues, we can get a better understanding of how this is all gonna work and how it can benefit all the communities, including us.
I agree. All right. We done? So?
Yep. Does it make a motion to table?
Well, then they ask for best, oh, can I stop you?
Yep. I'll withdraw.
Do you have everything we discussed for what you need?
I think so.
No clarification?
I think we're good.
All right. Kathy?
I'll make a motion to table.
It's seconded. All those in favor?
Roll call.
What?
Every vote has to be rolled.
Oh, we got a roll call?
Every vote.
Oh, Jason, you're throwing curveballs at me. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Edward?
Yes.
All right. In unanimous, we table it. All right. Next up, CPC proposal. We should always define our acronyms. What does CPC stand for?
Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Proposal to Purchase 114 Center Street. I thought we already bought it.
No, this is a different place.
Oh, no, that was the different address. I'm sorry.
So Mike Dempsey for the Conservation Commission tonight and
Hi, Mike. Welcome.
So, so this is informational only. Not asking you to make any decisions tonight. Just want to give you a little more information about this potential community preservation project. Why are we doing it? So our presentation tonight, I'm just gonna have Rebecca flip through it as I speak.
This one, yeah.
And, great. And I'm more than happy to answer questions at the end. So the current site is located at 114 Center Street. It's currently a 19.3 acre parcel. It includes the church building that you see up there, parking lot, some 17 acres of open space and the former EPA DEP filter building. The 17 acres of open space are a mixture of forest streams, wetlands and a pond. Johnson's Creek flows through it and actually it's the site of the former swimming hole from back in the 60s and 70s. Next, yeah. The, the site really has not been developed or used because primarily it's covered by wetlands and the stream, which really makes it practically unbuildable or not useful. Next. So part of the site is the former Superfund site from the EPA project that was done in, beginning back in the late 90s. And EPA completed their work in 2013. Next slide. They issued a document saying that the project was done and they turned the property back over to the church. The church always owned the property, but EPA took over a portion of it to put that building up, which they used as a filtration building. Next slide. This is a picture of the building. It's a brick building. It's about 7,500 square feet. Masonary brick building was built in 1999. It's basically now an empty shell. They removed all their filtration equipment from the building and it is empty. And again, is a property of the church. Property has electricity, electric heat, running water and sewer going to it. So some of the potential plans of some of the surrounding properties, next, include the open space at 150 Center Street, which the Selectmen control and have say over, and consists of about 60 acres of open space. That's been the subject of a study that, that you heard from the consultants on about a month and a half ago. Next.
Mike, we control it?
Yes.
It says no snowmobiles. I never approved that. I want snowmobiles. Did you put that sign up?
It doesn't. Well
I want to get a like RM 125 and go bomb around there. Can I do that?
I suppose you could. The
Sorry. No, I just saw the sign.
That's all right. The, the property there at 150 Center has about 40 acres in the middle of it that, that can be used, but quite a bit of it is deemed as turtle habitat by the Natural State's Natural Heritage Program. So that has to be taken into account with what's done there. Next. So the consultants told us about potential development at the site, perhaps some commercial development, perhaps some housing or mix. And as I say, that's about 40 acres in the middle of the property when you enter from 150 Center Street. Some other parcels that bound this church property are 46 Washington Street, which, you know, is the historic last mill building. That abuts it on the north side. And then next slide is our least favorite building in town.
Yes.
Valley Screw. And so that directly abuts the church property on the west side. Hopefully the town is the middle, in the middle of the tax taking on it. So hopefully that eventually will go away. So as far as the purchasing the property from the church and the diocese, we are, we have met with the church. We've told them about what we are interested in. We did all that about a year ago and after that, we ended up getting in a discussion with some of the people that are in the local church. And in the past six months, I would say we've been in talks with the diocese real estate department. So some of the things that would have to be done in order to purchase the property are subdivision filings, potentially update the appraisal of the property, and of course, get town approvals at town meeting. One of the next steps would be a purchase and sale agreement. But again, we can't really do that until we've identified a funding source. And right now, the plan is to fund this with Community Preservation Act funds from the open space account, which currently has approximately $550,000 in it. So there is enough money in the CPA open space account to consider a purchase. That's all in my slides. So why are we interested in the property? Big question. That's what I would say. Why? Why do we want to do this? So there's actually about four good reasons to do it. As you saw, the potential development at 150 Center Street kind of depends upon us buying this for a couple of reasons. One is that the Natural Heritage Endangered Species Act program will want us to ensure that we have mitigation area for any land that we take away at 150 Center Street that's considered turtle habitat. for any land that we take away at 150 Center Street that's considered turtle habitat. Yeah, it's hard to see on that map, but on both sides of the 150 Center Street are considered turtle habitat by the state. So, in order to use that land, they would say, well, you have to provide us with some other land that is protected turtle habitat. So, this 17 acres could be that. Another reason related to 150 Center Street is a second entrance. Right now, there is no second entrance to the property at 150 Center Street. Potentially, there is a second entrance at 46 Washington Street. But it's blocked. But by purchasing the 17 acres, a little corner of the property could be used to get into 150 Center Street. It's kind of complicated, I know. Another reason is obviously to protect, continue to protect open space, turtle habitat, aquifer, all of which relate to this property. And finally, the site has the brick building. It's a potential affordable housing site, community building, many other potential municipal uses could be cited there. So, overall, as I say, I think there's many good reasons why we should consider purchasing the property. As I mentioned, CPA, we have enough money to do it. We have appraisal of the property. We can't pay more than the appraised price. And so, that's part of the negotiations with the church. We're waiting to hear back from the diocese about what they're doing. They're putting it out for sale, but they don't want us to tell them that we're interested in it or how much we're willing to pay for it until they hear from anybody else that might be interested in the property. So, we're expecting that to happen sometime in early January. I'll take any questions that you might have.
You're requesting 170?
Well, that's what's in there, but...
So, it's the cat's out of the bag. I mean, you just, what you just said, right?
No, they know. They know what the appraised value is. The appraised value is $220,000. So, we can't pay more than $220,000 for it.
Let me ask you this. Does the church just want to get the most amount of money for it? So, they don't care what we do with it? So, I mean...
Locally, I think local church members do care. And we got a lot of positive feedback last year when we presented this at the church.
What's inside that building?
Excuse me?
What's inside the shell of that building?
Nothing, it's empty.
They gave us pictures.
That's a garage?
Wait.
I'm looking.
There's pictures in our packet.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Didn't you give us a picture?
I didn't see the pictures when I said...
Didn't you have a picture of the inside of that building in one of our packets?
It's definitely on the Superfund.
Oh, yeah, here it is. Lovely.
Oh, it's a garage. So, let me ask you this, right?
Yep.
My wheels are turning, right? The building looks like it's probably worth the money. So, it seems like a really good deal.
Yep.
Would it be possible for us to buy the land with CPC funds and then just bifurcate the building? And maybe the town could use the building unrestricted by the CPC fund requirements? And then, we would be able to use it for anything, whether it be parking fire trucks, ambulances, or office space, or using it as a utility building for a variety of reasons?
Yes.
Or could it be, you know, a senior center or something, morph into something down the road?
Right.
But it seems to, like, let's just say, for instance, we give a max, cob off the building and the footprint, and we pay a dollar for that. You know, 10 bucks, nominal value. Is that possible to structure in any way we want to, and the church doesn't care?
Yes. No, the church won't care.
Okay.
We can purchase it with CPA funds, entirely with CPA funds. And then, if we decide to use the building for a non-CPA purpose, then we can pay back the CPA whatever the valuation of the building alone is. Pay back to the CPA fund.
That might be the lion's share of the money.
The building, in the appraisal, the building isn't really worth very much because it's, there's no access to the building. It's completely inaccessible.
Well, how do they get to it? With a helicopter?
On the Valley Screw building. You have to go through Valley Screw.
Oh, is there an easement?
No.
The government had an agreement, or, you know, I mean, I don't know how the EPA did it, but, you know, if the EPA says they have to get through there. The EPA told the church they were going to put that building there. The church didn't have a choice to say yes or no. They just had to do it.
Does the church have access to it? Does it abut the church?
No.
So, they couldn't grant us an easement?
Nobody can use that building. It's totally inaccessible.
We're going to have to buy Valley Screw to make that building useful.
Right.
So, was that the plan? Is it the connected thoughts?
Well, I mean, we're doing a tax taking on the Valley Screw building.
Well, I don't know if we are, you know? We don't know that.
Yeah, we do.
Do we?
Yes.
All right. I don't know we're doing that. That hasn't been decided. Now we?
We are.
So, we're going to get titled to a Superfund site?
Sure.
So, it's a conversation that the board had, I want to say, a couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago, I wasn't on the board.
Just about how we were not foreclosing on properties and how we were not cleaning up our tax title accounts and how we had our impact to our overlay. And we started talking about, you know, taking stricter enforcement in terms of making sure that we were collecting the taxes and not paying any favorites or not, you know, just going through that process. So, as part of that, the treasurer collector has been taking all of the proper steps to make sure that if you're, you know, not paying your taxes, that it's going into demand and that, you know, if necessary, the foreclosure process has begun.
Might want to revisit that. I mean, what does the town council think about, you know, taking title to something that used to be a Superfund site? What do the people think? I understand fairness and collecting taxes, but I mean, if it's, you know, form of Love Canal, maybe we shouldn't.
Having, you know, living in the area, it is the worst thing in this town. That building is collapsing in. It has to be fenced off.
Is it clean?
No, I mean, it's clean of contamination.
Is it clean?
The EPA has designated that it is mediated to levels of acceptable nature to the point where they've removed all of their equipment from that building and have walked away from the site and said that they've checked it off their list. So, they have their monitoring, most of their monitoring laws have been removed. I think there's a few remaining on site.
Right.
But otherwise, they removed all of their equipment, stopped treating the land, and it's been untreated and untouched for the last few years. So, they returned over the building to the Archdiocese, and they're ready to move forward. So, if...
Now, is Valley Screw buildable? You can build on it? I mean, would it pass a 21E?
There's an AUL on both sites, an activity use limitation on both of the sites, both Valley Screw property as well as the property that we're talking about this evening. They vary in what's restricted in terms of what the property can be utilized for.
What are those?
It depends. I mean, from my understanding, the, you know, anything that you do on the property would require a licensed soil evaluator. If you're starting to shift soils around and dig, you wouldn't be able to put any water or well of some sort in the ground. I believe that the front one for Valley Screw, there's no housing, but the one in the back on the Archdiocese property, you are allowed to put housing on the property. But there's little things like that that restrict the development and which way you choose to develop it in the future.
So, if we go to foreclosure with it, does it go to auction? Should go to auction, right?
It can go to auction, correct.
Well, maybe we want it to go to auction. If somebody will buy it and they'll pay for the demolition, raising the building, and do something with it, it doesn't cost the town a penny, then it probably ought to go out to the highest bidder. Even if it's a dollar, somebody might come in there with a plan to make that site beautiful, and it costs the town nothing.
100%, that's fine.
So, who's making that decision on whether or not it goes to auction?
It would be the treasurer collector, as she is the only person who has the authority to make those decisions.
And that's in the statute, or it's in... Interesting. Huge. Anyone? Edward?
Mike, it certainly makes sense, and the price is certainly reasonable. But without, without the purchase of the Valley Screw property, that would, the back building can't be used. You can't access it unless it goes through the Valley Screw property.
Yeah, basically. I mean, you might be able to access it from behind 46 Washington Street. I'd have to look at it more closely, but not easily. The most, the easiest way to get to it, obviously, is through the Valley Screw property. So, you know, if we didn't take the Valley Screw property, we would certainly probably want to get some kind of easement or purchase of at least a right of way to get to the building.
But, you know, realistically, they ought to just give it to the town. They haven't been paying taxes on it because it's owned by the church. So, they're probably paying taxes on that building now because that's not, that's not part of...
I don't know if they are or not, yeah. That's a good question. I don't know.
But the land, the land, they probably haven't been paying taxes. And so, in lieu of taxes forever that the church has owned it, they ought to just turn it over to the town.
I don't think they're paying taxes on the property itself.
On the, well, no, maybe the building, maybe not.
I don't think they're paying any taxes.
No, there's no taxes collected on that property.
Not on the building. Now, you did mention, unless I heard you wrong, there's water, electricity to the back building?
Yes.
Sewage? Is it septic tank? There's no sewage?
Yeah, then it must be a septic tank, yes.
Yeah, I think it makes sense, but I'd like to have them just turn it over to the town because they haven't been paying taxes on it.
We definitely made that request.
Yes.
You already made that request?
Yes.
We made that request.
And that was a negative?
They did not take kindly to the request.
I'm all set, thank you.
They don't have to under state law, right? So, if you don't have to, why would you? I wouldn't. Want to give me 17 acres? I'll take it.
Yep.
Well, I can't actually strike that, you know, public official. But anyways, if I were a private citizen. Mark?
No, I mean, I would like to see that land, you know, used for the proper thing, but that building is pretty much useless. If it's going to force us into buying the Valley Screw building, and I'm curious on what the town residents, my thoughts on that situation, but... I don't know. Other than that, I got nothing.
Yeah, before we, before we take it and tax it?
It's exactly like you just said. I mean, that is the process. We foreclose on the property and auction off the property unless the town would like to utilize the property for something else, which the town would have to ultimately decide. But the process is to foreclose on the property and auction it off to the highest bidder, which is what we do with all of our property unless it's land of low value and it's a different filing under DOR. But it's the same type of process. The town treasurer collector is the one who initiates it. If they've fallen behind on their taxes, it goes through process. And then, you start the foreclosure process. And then, as you just rightly correctly stated, we auction off the property.
We auction it off, or it's auctioned off per order of the land court, and we don't have to bid on it. I don't know that we want to bid on it, you know? But I think we need, I think we need public feedback on that. It's such a big issue.
Yep. One other quick question, Mike. If we were to buy Valley Screw and say, all of a sudden, some pollution starts popping back up in 20 years, are we liable for that cleanup? Or is the environmental coming back in, or who's going to be...
We're only liable for any new pollution.
Right. Well, it's always going to be new. They're not going to say it's old stuff when they said they cleaned it up and everything great.
Are you showing that? I always thought it was cradle to grave. If you own it anywhere in the chain of title, you're stuck with it, no?
It's only the way that it was described to me and the way that it's written in the agreement is any new pollution. And not written in the agreement, anything that was described by KP Law and then by, I know that Denise Demkowski, Bill Dunn, and a couple of other members, I think Senator Char were looking into this a while back. And that was, all the documents and the notes that I saw from council was that any new pollution would be a responsibility of the town.
Because we got an, it looked like an opinion letter, I saw it up on the screen, of like de minimis consent. So, there's a small amount of contamination there, and they just considered it de minimis? Is that the case, Mike? Are you up on that?
I believe that the organic materials polluted the ground. And what was said was that the reason why that building is there and nobody wants to touch it is because of mold issues in the building, not because of any organic chemicals that are still in the building. So...
Has anyone got an estimate on what it costs to demolish that building and remove all the rubble?
About $600,000 to $700,000.
Okay, so we might foreclose on it, and we own it, and then we get a $700,000 cleanup.
Or, like you said, we could auction it off, and somebody could do that as part of the, what they choose to do with the redevelopment of the property.
Yeah, it's a huge, huge cost for the town, no matter what we do. I mean, if, we don't have to take title and auction it off, maybe somebody comes in and they solve all our problems for us. Kathy?
Yes. I have kind of several things. One is the restrictions on the use of this property due to the Superfund cleanup ending. I know they still have test wells down behind a mill pond that they monitor. So, how much of that land has restrictions on it, other than the turtles? I'm talking about restrictions for building, like the church property itself, where the church sits, and the parking lot. Is that part of, they're not restricted there? So, it's just, is it just when you get back to where the Valley Screw and the Superfund cleanup building is? Or does it extend into the wooded area there?
No, I don't believe that it does. I believe it's only behind where the brick building is there.
Who would have that actual delineation? There must be a specific...
Oh, yeah. We have all the documentation on it.
And it's recorded at the Registry of Deeds, so it has all that information as well.
Okay, so you said something about having to do a subdivision plan as part of purchasing the property. Can you explain that further?
Oh, well, that's because the church is, we're going to have to subdivide the church because the church wants to keep about two and a half acres of the property for their parking lot and where the current building is.
Oh, so they're not selling the church?
No, right.
Oh, okay. So, that's why I was trying to understand why you needed to file a subdivision plan.
You may want to check in with Jason to see if he has anything.
Yeah.
I want, two seconds. Are you ready?
Yep, just about. So, that's why you want to have the subdivision plan, because the church and the parking lot are being cut off.
Right.
From, so realistically speaking, when they go out to try and get a bid around this property, the person purchasing the property, how would they access that property? Through where? Would have to be through one of the owners that still has land in the Center Street area that's, is there anyone in there that still owns any of that land? Mattingly, any of them? We've bought all that. They're not there anymore.
We surround the place except for Valley Screw.
Okay, so, we basically have, there's, there would be, it seems, no reason for anyone else to try to buy this property because they can't get to it?
No, but...
To develop it.
You never know.
Oh, I know, I agree. You never know. But, but that's why the price for 17 acres is $170,000. Because nowadays, in Groveland, what's an acre going for, a buildable acre?
It's about $200,000 or so.
I was going to guess 300, but 200 at least, yes.
Yeah, so, we don't think that, there's rarely anyone realistically who wants to buy it. But again, you never know.
Okay, so what you're looking for from us is whether or not we feel like this is a good idea to keep going?
Yes. Well, I just wanted to, you know, I think the commission wants to put a community preservation project in before the CPC. And I want your board here to know about it and at least understand what's being asked before it comes before a project at town meeting.
Right. And this property would help us connect to the rail trail that we opened as well?
Mm-hmm.
So, all those trails will be open, and potential skating pond?
Right.
We'll keep coming back to that, you know? We'll keep coming back to that, you know? Two thumbs up on the skating pond.
Skating and fishing.
That doesn't hurt the turtles, right?
No.
That's fine. So, you also mentioned the Groveland Housing Authority? I'm just curious as to why they're, you're partnering with the...
Only if they were interested in pursuing the brick building as housing somewhere in the future.
Okay, so you would expect them to fund that, they would use their federal funding then to?
Well, or, because housing is a community preservation fund.
Yes.
You know, it can fund. If, if we bought it and say after five years we had resolved the issue of access through the front of the building there, we could use CPA funds to rehabilitate it into housing.
Well, could you just make it senior housing? Would it have to be Housing Authority housing? It couldn't, because that's controlled by the federal government, yeah.
Right, no, it could be senior housing.
Could be community housing, okay. Okay, I'm done, thanks.
Jason?
No, I'm good.
I'm good, all right. So, you've thrown it out there? And I guess when we come to warrant article time, it would be a proposal potentially by a vote of your committee and brought before us? Or you've already approved it? Where are you in the process?
No, you know, it's going to be presented as a CPA project by the end of the month. It due December 31st. And the Community Preservation Committee will review it in January. I appreciate your feedback because these, there are a few things to think about more about it. And so, I'll take that back and work them into some answers. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Policies and procedures of host communities to promote and encourage the full participation in the regulated marijuana industry by people from disproportionately harmed communities as required by Chapter 180 of the Acts of 2022. It's a continuation from our December 4th, 2023 meeting. I think Rebecca, our town administrator, was getting some more information.
Yes, at the last meeting, the board had asked a couple of questions and asked me to consult with council on those questions. Town council did get back to me. They said that the initial policy, one of the first issues was whether or not, when it would take effect since it was past the date that it was supposed to back in July. They clarified saying that the initial policy was required to be adopted by July 1st. But since the commission did not provide any guidance prior to that deadline and the regulations were not final, it has not been enforced yet. Under the recently promulgated regulations, fine assessments will not take effect until after May 1st, 2025. In terms of the question relative to the fines, it was clarified that a host community will be fined in an amount equal to the annual total of community host agreements received from all marijuana establishments and operating in the host community during the prior calendar year. We have none. The next question was in relation to how many municipalities did they have that had accepted these regulations as well? The policy, the response was, I have sent similar policies to all the municipalities that my firm represents and many of them have adopted, but I do not have an exact, exact number. And then you had asked for a clarification of streamline. And the council had stated, I interpret streamline to mean prompt scheduling and review of social equity applications.
Thank you. Jason, do you have any questions?
No, I don't really have any questions. I mean, I know that watching the meeting last, last week, there was a lot of talk about the streamlining process and concerns over it because it seemed a little ambiguous. But, and, and there was mention of the fact that we should be doing that for all businesses that come in. And we should be. And ultimately, if we don't have it in writing, it doesn't exist. And that's one of the reasons why I think they're pushing to have this policy implemented and put into writing. So, I think it's something we should move forward with and, and put it in writing. And it would probably behoove us to, to start focusing more on that when anybody comes in for a business.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
Yeah, I think the clarification is really helpful. It appears we're still in a gray area on this in that we don't have any of these businesses in our town yet. So, any fines wouldn't happen. But the fact that it is, it's a law and that there's going to be additional requirements coming down the pipeline, possibly to include a bylaw that we'd have to think about before May 1st, 2024, which is not that far away. I don't like having things, you know, handed, forced on us in that way any more than anybody else. But I also don't feel that in the position on the board, I can play, I'm not going to do that kind of game with people's tax dollars because we do end up with fines, we do end up with lawsuits. When we don't follow the rules, when we don't know the rules, and when we're uninformed. And, I mean, we have lawsuits at present, don't we? Do we presently have any lawsuits that the town is, is working on against the town?
Kathy, point of order, I mean, you know?
No, okay, so we don't want to answer that, fine. The point is, I know in the past...
If we do, we don't want to talk about them necessarily without having an honor agenda item.
Okay, well, let me just say that, you know, having been on the board a few times, I've seen the effect of not adopting policies or not following laws when we could have and the cost to the taxpayer. This, this is their tax dollars. If the money had to come out of my pocket, I wouldn't take the chance of being sued or paying a fine for something that doesn't seem to impact our local control or our local bylaw. So, I don't see any cause to not allow this to move forward. We can always revisit it. In fact, the town attorney says we're going to have to revisit this as we get more information and we understand it better. But to just ignore it and say, I don't like it, I'm not going to do it, then pay for it out of your own pocket because I don't think it's right to take it from our taxpayers. I think they pay enough in taxes.
My two cents on this is failing marijuana violates federal law. I don't think the Commonwealth of Massachusetts should be in violation of federal law. Even if the U.S. Attorney General doesn't want to enforce the laws, they're still on the books. If you don't like the laws, change them through the legislative process and the enactment process. So, I think this is a snub on federal law. I don't condone it. I think it sends the wrong message that you can cherry pick whether or not you want to follow federal law and that you're going to go it alone. So, in terms of compliance, I don't bow down to the Commonwealth when they violate federal law. So, I'm against it. There's no teeth in the tiger either. We don't have any facilities in town. So, if they want to fine us times zero, zero times a million is zero. Zero, so whatever the penalty is, it's a toothless tiger, violates federal law. I'm going to vote against it. I, I just think it's, it's irresponsible for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to tell everyone to be good citizens, but they, they don't care about federal drug laws. Ed?
Well, I, I think our hands are tied on this. With the town voted to allow medical marijuana establishments, I, I think we, I think we have to approve it. You know, you, you can second guess the, the town's, it must have been a town vote. I don't remember it. How, how many years ago did we pass that? That went before the town meeting.
It did.
It did.
So, because it went before the town meeting, we could, we could basically bring it up again and this time vote it down, couldn't we?
Guess we can do anything we want, right?
Yeah, I would think so.
2012.
2012?
When the, the Massachusetts passed the statute of humanitarian medical use of marijuana.
Yeah, so, basically, we could, at the next town meeting, we could have an article to disallow medical marijuana establishments. If we voted for it once, we could vote, vote to take it up. But I think the way this is set up, I, I think our hands are tied. I think, I think we have, we have to vote for it, we have to approve it.
Tie my hands, I untie them. Like Houdini, I get out. Mark?
No, I agree with Ed. I think we kind of have no choice.
All right, let's chair. I'll move the question. All those in favor? Jay? Wait a minute, I got a roll call, it's out. Jason?
Yes.
Jason, Jess, Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a, I'm a dead set no. Mark?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Four to one, I lose. I guess the first, four to one on our chairmanship, yeah. So much for leadership. All right, moving right along. Fiscal Year 25 Capital Improvements Plan. Town Administrator Rebecca Oldham is a continuation from our December 4th meeting. What do you got?
So, I provided the board with a presentation of the proposed Fiscal Year 25 Capital Improvement Plan. At the meeting, the board had requested some additional time to review the document and the materials that were provided. So, we added it back to the agenda. And I'm happy to answer any questions and/or provide any additional information that the board may need.
What were the major points of your changes? Any, any thin material? You change it at all?
I didn't make any changes. I had no comments that came in.
So, you're just seeking feedback and it was silence? Okay, Kathy?
Well, I think that this is, this is an impressive document and there is a lot in it. So, personally, I was hopeful that we could just focus our attention on the immediate proposal in here for the capital projects to go forward for this coming town meeting, if that's all right? And then circle back to the capital plan, maybe after the town meeting, for the, the more overview parts of it. It's, there's a lot in here that you should probably go through the sections, but...
What's your concern about Olden Bill?
Well, there's no, just so that we make sure we understand all the information that's in here. It's a lot of really good information. But she, you know, she's proposing six projects. She discussed the funding of these projects with us.
Yeah.
We reviewed the funding coming from free cash, the ARPA funds, proceeds of sale of town buildings, and the bond premiums. And I believe at the end of this document, that's where the information on the six projects is contained. Is that where it is?
I didn't hit...
The detail for the six projects that you're proposing to go forward with?
Yes, so that's at the, the end of the document prior to the appendix. So, that's on page...
So, long document.
31.
So, page 31. I don't know what page I'm on.
So, these capital expenditures, I mean, they're, they're planned, right?
Yes, so...
On a, on a cycle, on a replacement basis? Most of them, some of them? Which ones are non-recurring kind of new, new?
I mean, it depends on what you say for reoccurring, right? Because most capital projects...
We replace a police car every four or five years, right?
Exactly, so the police car would be something that we...
Cycle through.
Cycle through. But other ones, they, they do have a cycle, but they're much longer, like a generator and/or...
An excavator will last more than five years, I hope.
Things of that nature are a little longer. So, they're all on a, a reoccurring schedule, but the length of that is determined by whatever it is that we're...
Yeah, asset life.
Exactly. So, the ones that we had proposed was that the board had already approved the fire command vehicle that came in under. We allocated ARPA funds for the purchase of that vehicle. The other projects that were proposed for the upcoming fiscal year were the Mark Cruiser for the public, for the police, as we do annually. And we had proposed utilizing free cash, as we've done historically. The other one was the electrical replacement at Town Hall Complex. That's the study that we had talked about with the, the panels are being outdated. They don't make the parts anymore. They're a hazard. We need to do a study in order to ensure what type of design would, capacity bearing type of information that we would need from an electrical engineer to get us that information. So, that is at $25,000 and we're looking to utilize ARPA funds. Then we have the library shelving replacement. That's a reoccurring project over the span of about five to six years. It's a big project. It's something that's definitely necessary, but it's something that we're, you know, doesn't need to be done all at once. It would be nice, but it doesn't need to happen like that. It would also be nice to see if the library trustees could also find some funding in some of their accounts to help facilitate that effort. So, the plan proposes a $20,000 allocation over the span of six years in order to make that, five years in order to make that happen. And that's being proposed the upcoming fiscal year for the ARPA funds. And then we have the highway garage replacement. The garage is falling into disrepair. There's wires sticking out, there's eroding metal all along the sides. We have a bunch of new vehicles that we had been able to purchase most recently, which is great. And to make sure that we're protecting our equipment and giving our laborers a place to, to house their, themselves during the elements as well. We are proposing to replace the structure, expand it slightly, but it's kind of a shell of a type of building, so it's not really intricate. But the total figure was $114,000. And we had proposed using the proceeds of sale of buildings and the bond premiums that we have outstanding that are sitting on the books. So, all in all, we were only looking, oh, excuse me. And then the other project that we had put forward is the public safety generator here over at the Town Hall Complex in the public safety building. Essentially, that is the backup power for the entire Town Hall Complex. We're also the warming center and cooling center. So, it was important to make sure that we had the backup power. It would connect to natural gas, which it currently does not. And the other generator is nearing its useful life. So, we had proposed utilizing $84,000 of free cash and some ARPA funds to accommodate that project as well. So, all in all, the total capital expenditure for Fiscal Year 25 was $378,400. Of that, $149,000 would be allocated in free cash. $111,000 would be allocated of the remaining ARPA funds, which we must allocate before December 31st of 2024 under the law. $89,000 with the proceeds of sale of building. And then a bond premium of a project that has at least 20 years of useful life, $41,000. And bond premiums for a project that has at least five years is $3,000.
What does that leave us left in the cookie jar? Any crumbs?
We're not proposing to use any free cash, I mean, excuse me, we're not proposing to use any capital stabilization and/or stabilization funds, free cash. Again, we're only proposing to use $150,000 of that money. If something comes up like we had...
What would be left?
Of the allocation for the fiscal year?
You say you're going to use 150, what's left?
So, for fiscal year, so the free cash that we just had certified, the total...
My question is, are we draining it?
No. No, the total for free cash, like I had mentioned, is, I'm just pulling it up to have the exact figure, but it's something along the, like, $440,000 of free cash certified. So, we're only proposing 150 of that for capital expenditures. And like I mentioned at the last meeting, if something does come up and we are not able to, like, snow and ice goes over and we start... We don't have to make an allocation towards that project this, that year. It just states that this is your priority of projects that you'd like to move forward with. And if that money under free cash allocation is available, you can make that in a warrant article at town meeting for that specific purpose.
So, all of these projects, all of these capital improvements or replacements would be warrant articles for the people to vote for at town meeting?
Yes, they would have to vote for them to allocate the funding. Yes, every single one of them.
Even if this board voted favorable?
The only ones I could, myself, is ARPA funds. ARPA funds are distributed by the Board of Selectmen and don't require a town meeting vote.
So, we want, are we targeting specifics, projects on the ARPA funds? Just it's kind of a use it or lose it? So, it's kind of like, you know, spend the money?
Yes, and if you look at the report, I tried to provide a breakdown to see exactly where we were spending the majority of the money. A lot of the money, like we said, we wanted to use on capital projects because it was just easier to, to, to manage. And it was just an opportunity that we don't typically have in Groveland to have monies that we can use for those. So, I put together a chart to kind of show you exactly where those monies were going. The majority of that went to public safety as well as the border health, the Bagnow School, technology upgrades, the library. So, there's, it seems to be a fair distribution of funds throughout all the departments, not really specifically targeted to one over the other. But those monies do have to be allocated prior to the end of the calendar year.
Including the Bagnow lead pipes?
Yeah, we did that one.
Get the lead out, that was paid for? Is that project done?
Yep.
Okay. So, is there a better use of funds? I just kind of play devil's advocate here. Just should some of those ARPA funds be used on, say, police salaries or fire salaries? Or can we use it for an alternative expense?
So, they're one-time funds. So, my professional opinion is not to utilize one-time funds for reoccurring expenses such as salaries. But we did provide... for reoccurring expenses such as salaries, but we did provide premium pay as it was described, but it really was just the monies that we provided to public safety personnel, as well as all Town Hall staff of up to $2,000 were given to employees based upon a formula that was generated by the Board of Selectmen or a former Board of Selectmen member and voted on by the Board of Selectmen. So we did spend about $41,800 for premium pay for the Town Hall, and then we also spent about $62,500 on public safety premium pay. And then there was the allocation of $2,000 that went to the Garden Club for lost revenue. So those were some of the approved projects that were geared towards those other expenses, such as salaries, as you, as you talk about, but only for a span of time during the pandemic, not necessarily reoccurring over the lifespan of their position.
So they can't be used for future salaries?
Because the monies will no longer exist, because we only have the $2.4 million allocation, which we have 1.9 remaining. I mean, excuse me, that we've utilized 1.9 million already.
I was just thinking, I mean, Fire Department is still full-time fireman, right? Is that, is that, that's an issue that's going to come up, and we got some sort of subsidy or break on that, right? So...
We could definitely do that, but again, I, my issue is that I caution against it because you're just kicking the can down the road, because you're going to have to come up with those monies in your operating budget. So if you're going to be providing, you know, the additional $100,000 to that salary line, then we're not making up for it in the budget to make sure that the following fiscal year we have that available to us.
Understand that, but could we use it for the, for the next fiscal year, or we have to use it by June? I mean, you know, sometimes you need a Band-Aid approach. That's not my first tool out of the toolbox, but if it kicks the can down the road and we buy time, time's valuable, and maybe we can figure it out. Instead of being reactionary, we have lead time. So does it buy us any lead time to maybe allocate some of those funds towards our Fire Department?
It's something that we can talk about. I know that they just issued a final rule on the federal level about the allocation of those funds and how they would be allocated, and what classifies as an allocation of funding prior to the deadline, and whether or not that means just by the board saying, I'm going to use X money for this, or whether it means that we have to have initiated the process of moving forward with that project. Do we have to go and get procurement bids? And does, once we have, or is it, once we have the contractor, once we have, you know, utilized the funds, does that now deem that the allocation has been made, and then we have time before 2026 to expend those funds? Because the first part is that the allocation has to be made by 2024, and then you have up until 2026 to spend all of the remaining funds.
Okay, timeline-wise, I mean, again, is this, these warrant articles are, that's going to come up in the budgetary process, so we're waiting for department heads to submit budgets, I guess, and so we, I think we need to look at things globally before we make decisions on allocations. That's my opinion. Kathy?
Well, I think the capital, the capital items come from a separate fund on the operating budget, so, I mean, I don't...
But ARPA has flexibility, that's why I kind of put the brakes on that and ask those questions, because there's some flexibility on that, not just capital.
We've been openly critical of Penn ducket funding positions with ARPA funds because we have seen the impact on the assessments from those positions then being absorbed into the school's operating budget and having to be funded without the ARPA funds, or where there, theirs weren't called ARPA, they were, what were their?
CARES funding.
CARES or ESER, ESER funding.
Oh, theirs was ESER, yes.
Everybody has different names for the same things. These were the handouts during the pandemic. And the problem I have with even considering using that for funding of positions moving forward is that it's, it's short-lived, and it doesn't solve the problem. It doesn't balance the budget. And I feel that we, we don't have a capital committee, so we stand in as the capital committee until such time as there is a capital committee. So I'm comfortable making a decision this evening to support the recommendations for the capital plan, and then if in the balancing of the Budget Act we find that there's other factors, we can always revisit it. It doesn't go to town meeting until the spring. So at some point, you can't just keep pushing decisions off, you have to try to make them. And these are based on the fact that capital items should be funded from capital funds, from, from stabilization, from free cash, from bond premiums that happen once in a while, and the Bagnall money, the bond premium money, or whatever it's called from the Bagnall, I know I'm misphrasing it, that money is part of the borrowing, can only be used in the context of the Bagnall School, right? So we can't use it otherwise anyway. So the, the six items, the library shelving, the, the Bagnall is the front walk and the driveway, is that it? Yep. And then the highway garage being expanded and repaired, I guess, because it doesn't really offer a great environment for them to work in, some improvement to that would be worth it. The police cruiser seems like a very good, you know, we have to do that if we get behind on that. And is the, is this all-terrain thing in there or not in there?
It's not in for funding this fiscal year.
Okay, okay, so that's not in. All of these things, the six items, I don't know if I've listed all six. The generator, totally important, and the electrical panel, essential. We have to do a study on that because if that goes down, the dispatch and everybody's in trouble, right? So they're all high priority, must-do items, so why not move them off our plate, is my thought? Why don't we move these six items forward and then keep moving? What do you think?
Well, I think I agree with you, just the ARPA funds, I wouldn't necessarily characterize them as capital funds, would you, Rebecca?
Um, I wouldn't classify them as capital funds, but I definitely support the use of them as capital funds, because if they're not going to be used, I mean, these projects are all going to have to happen regardless to some extent, and if it's not going to be from a funds of that nature, it's going to be at the form of the taxpayers, as well as debt exclusions and/or, you know, just borrowing and bonds. So it, they are things that are going to come back to us, it's not like we're going to have an opportunity to. And using ARPA funds, which is one-time funds that we wouldn't have access to otherwise, it gives us an opportunity to move forward with that while we plan and strategize how we can fund some of those larger issues that we have with funding operation on a day-to-day basis.
All right. I just want to see the Fire Department budget before I commit ARPA funds. That's, that's my point. I don't want to jump the gun. Jason?
Yeah, I spent some time looking over this along with some of the actual requests, and I mean, this is, this was really the bare minimum to help prevent us from requiring a debt exclusion or going out to bond. So I thought this was extremely well put together, and the thought process behind it was really well executed.
Anything else? Thank you. Mark?
Good.
Mark's good. Edward?
Yeah, just a couple of things. The, some of these requests, for instance, the sidewalks, call Riverside Drive out here, I, I think with some creative writing, that, that could be swung through CPC money, because we did a sidewalk from Main Street down around the dog park out of CPC money. And I know we're going to have to use this Town Hall parking lot for parking for the events, because we've, we don't have as much space as we used to down there. So I, I think with some creative writing, some of that money, CPC money could be used for some of that sidewalk. In addition, the library shelving, shelving replacement, again, with, if it written up the proper way, some of that could come out of CPC funds somehow. And the all-terrain vehicle for the rail trail, a portion of that could come out of CPC money. I mean, it's well-needed, it's going to be certainly an asset. But last year, didn't we pass at the town meeting, continuing upon some matching grant or something? And so that already, part of that was coming out of CPC money. So again, that could, could be written up and taken out of CPC money.
No, I definitely agree with you. There's ways that we can utilize community preservation funds to fund some of our capital projects, which is why as part of the document, I have listed out all of the CPC funding that we have allocated since 2019 and the projects that we've used, whether or not ADA compliant, the dog park, other types of things that were utilized, the cemetery fencing. I would agree 100% with your assessment, it's just a matter of time, capacity, and, like you said, creative writing to make sure that it falls within the guidelines.
And I think that those, the sidewalks out here, I mean, it's been pushed out to, it looks like 2029. I, I think that, I don't think it can last that long. I think that should be done sooner.
It's definitely something that I want to get done sooner, but like we have said, I'm just not sure exactly how to get the proper funding in place to get it done. Like you said, CPA funding may be an opportunity, but I've been trying to pursue grants, and since we just finally got a fixed bus route, I think that our applications are going to get a much better rating moving forward. So I am still putting forward grant, or applications to fund that project a lot sooner, but I just didn't think that it warranted like a priority need, because if there's, you know, infrastructure projects out there that involve, you know, road replacement and stuff where people travel on a day-to-day basis, I felt as though those were more pressing, but at the same time, I understand what you're saying, I agree with what you're saying, and I can definitely look into trying to expedite that as best as I can.
And I, I did forget about the bus stop out there, though that even makes it, makes more sense to do the sidewalks over. And I'm sure that you can figure out how to write some of that up, the CPC funds. Use up your money, Mike. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to move along, or?
Well, what is the amount of, the total amount for the six capital projects that you're recommending? I know it's on the first page.
The total project is, the total amount, the total expenditures for fiscal year 25 as proposed for those projects was $378,419.
Three seventy-eight, three fourteen?
Three seventy-eight, four nineteen.
Four nineteen. I bit it backwards. I did, I did, I went backwards. Three seventy-eight, so I'll make a motion for three seventy-eight, four one nine to fin, fund the capital projects as recommended for fiscal '25 in the capital plan, from the sources recommended in the capital plan.
Second.
Further discussion. How much of the three seventy-four is ARPA fund, from the ARPA fund source?
$111,000.
How much is left in ARPA?
About $111,000, right?
So half.
Give or take, like, a little bit, maybe like a couple dollars here and there.
So it's like grabbing half of what's left?
Yes.
Getting closer to the wall. Anyone else?
We bought the fire chief a new car.
What's that?
We bought the fire chief a new car with ARPA funds. You went along with that?
I understand that, and we needed it, and it was on a cycle. So sometimes I'm, you know, I before E, except after C.
Sure.
Right, Mark?
Sure.
Whatever.
It's always, you know, consistently inconsistent, I...
Yes, I agree.
All right, I'm going to go this way. Jason, roll call.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Want to vote no?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Losing tonight, it's a... Must be Christmas coming. Four to one, I lose. I'm in the grinch, you know?
Second loss of the night.
It's democracy at work here, all right? God bless America. All right, moving along, we got appointments of the board. I don't see any. Approval of the minutes, Board of Selectmen meeting minutes, October the 10th, 2023. Has everyone had a chance to read those?
Yes, I did. I was there, right? I make a motion to approve those minutes.
Is there a second?
Well, second.
Anyone want to discuss it? Jason?
Uh, I vote to approve.
We have to roll call.
Roll call. Jason?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I was here then, right? Yeah. Go ahead, Mark.
Yes.
Edward?
I didn't hear him vote yet.
Yeah, I said yes.
Oh, okay.
Roll call.
I'm trying not to laugh.
It's unanimous. I didn't want to lose four to one again. Vote against my own minutes. Board of Selectmen meeting minutes, November the 6th, 2023. I was out of town.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Second, any, any discussion?
No.
Jason, you got anything?
Nothing.
All right, roll call, Jason?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, you want a question?
Point of order?
Yes, sir.
Jason was absent at that one.
Jason was, Jason, were you absent on the sixth?
That's right, there was only three of us.
I wasn't here, so I don't remember.
It was three of us. He's right. Jason can't vote.
Jason, you want, you want to withdraw your vote?
Yeah, I'll abstain.
He'll abstain, so we get an abstention. Kathy?
Yes.
Yes, I'll abstain, I was absent. Mark?
Yes. Yes.
All right, three in favor, two, two no-shows. Passes. Town administrator time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to provide the board a quick update and just let you know where we stand with the budget. So budget requests were sent out to the departments. The departments were supposed to submit their requests by the 15th, which they did. Today, I now sent out the digital budget book, so as part of the digital budget book, they'll be providing their mission statement, their goals, and their narratives as to their request. I started to do more in terms of our forecasting for revenues for the upcoming fiscal year. There's still a lot of unknowns at this point in time. A lot of the data hasn't been released from the state in terms of the cherry sheet or any of the numbers that they're predicting. But right now, preliminary estimate, considering, again, estimates considering the two and a half percent estimated new growth, local receipts, state aid, and some other financial sources, we're looking at about $23,621,000 that we're proposing in estimated revenue for fiscal year '25. So the initial requests, as I stated, have come in, those total requests with a lock on all of the salary accounts to the 2% cost of living increase that was discussed unless there was a contractual negotiation of some sort that would alter the 2% beyond that. We're looking at total services at $23,513,000. So right now, we are under budget. But again, that means we're very early in the process, because a lot of the expenditure items that we're seeing are all estimates. So we don't have any of the assessment information from either Penn ducket Regional School District, Whittio Tech, and/or Essex Tech. We don't have final numbers for the GIC and our health insurance. We don't have any numbers for our Essex County retirement contribution, and we're also in negotiations with both the water and sewer and highway unions for their contracts. So we have yet to finalize those. So there was some estimates and assumptions made, but of course, those can't really be defined until we have a final agreement. So we do have those unknowns that will impact that bottom line. As for some of the standard budgeting, we are looking to make a $50,000 contribution to the Town Stabilization Fund, another $50,000 contribution to the Town Capital Stabilization Fund. We're looking to do our annual $85,000 allocation to our OPEB. Right now, we're looking at a balance in our stabilization fund of 1.4 million. In the capital, we're looking at $350,000, and in OPEB, we're looking at about $754,000. The total OPEB liability is $5,22823, so we have a ways to go. In terms of some of the estimated revenues that we have projected, we have our standard two and a half percent. So if we take a look at the previous year's levy limit, it would be about $445,000 in additional revenue that would be brought in by the two and a half percent on the last year's levy. We take into consideration new growth. New growth is whenever there's any development that happens, it can be something as small as putting on a new deck or something of that nature. So we have seen a dramatic fall in new growth over the last few years. To give you an example, in fiscal year '22, we saw it go from $204,000, and we're proposing it to go down to $111,000 for fiscal year '25. And fiscal year '24, we saw a huge drop down to $109,000. So new growth is definitely on the decline. We are trying to take into consideration that the permits have been pulled for a larger development that's happening here in town, so that will definitely help with local receipts if they pull their permits because there's permit fees that get tied into the local receipts. As for new growth, it's a little bit different because the new growth, until it's fully occupied, you're not going to realize the full potential of that development. But little by little, you'll get a little bit of that growth that's captured, but it's not enough to make a substantial difference in what we're predicting for revenues. So the other revenues that we are showing is for the motor vehicle excise tax. We have seen a sharp decline in the amount of people that are buying new vehicles and the excise tax that we're taking in. So we are proposing on level funding that for fiscal year '25 at $990,000. The other local, the other aid that we had talked about was the state aid. And as we had mentioned, we don't have those figures. Last year, we received a bump in our unrestricted government aid as well as the tax, the state-owned properties. We received a larger jump than we had in prior years. So we only put a standard 2% increase on both of those numbers to give us a realistic expectation. If we get more, that's great, but hopefully they won't go under that. And then the last one we have for revenue is interest on income. So that has to do with the market and the banks and with the recent increase in the interest rates. We've been very successful in making money on those accounts. It did take a really, really bad decline in fiscal year '22 with only 9,963. It jumped up in fiscal year '23 to 64,000. We estimated 30,000 for fiscal year '24. And so for fiscal year '25, with the interest rate set at the 5%, we're looking at, hoping to capture about $40,000 in income there. As for the larger expenditure items, to keep the board updated, there's the trash contract. So we are looking at an increase with the collection per year for fiscal year, excuse me, for July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 for $542,000. And then there will be an increase in the cost per ton to $95 per ton. And so the monthly average trash invoice for fiscal year '24 has been about $54,941. So we're seeing a definite rise in tonnage. In 2026, per the contract, we can expect, excuse me, in 2024, five, per the contract, we can expect these numbers to increase to about 11%. So that'll be a very big increase for the following fiscal year. Additionally, per the contract, there are added fees such as the company fee, residue fee, and excess contamination fee. So all of those have a 3% that is applied every July 1st for the extended term of the contract. So the monthly average for the recycling invoices for fiscal year '24 is about 4,520, which is not awful, but at the same time, with those additional fees, it's going to make that monthly bill go up. So we're looking at a total allocation of $820,000 of the budget into the trash expenditure line item. Insurance, we were actually very fortunate, and we have been awarded and locked into a two-year rate guarantee. So this is for property and casualty and professional liability insurance. So there will be a 0% increase this year and a maximum of two and a half percent next year. We still have some of the things that were covered that are not guaranteed as part of that locked-in rate because, of course, there's always the fine print. So we are still adding about a 4% increase. So that will take care of some of the outstanding claims and the deductibles that we have. And it does not apply to the workers' compensation portion of our coverage as well as injured-on-duty policies that we have in place. And then, like we had mentioned, the other larger item that we've seen in prior years jump was the technology budget. So we took an opportunity to take it and break it down into a little bit more detail. It's exactly what we have for reoccurring expenses, software expenses, contracts that we have. And we put that together, and we're looking at about $130,000 for that particular line item. And as I mentioned in the beginning, we're still waiting for some of those other outstanding items such as the Essex County retirement. We're assuming a 6% increase on our health insurance, which has been pretty standard as part of the GIC. But we also have to take into consideration that we do have some new employees, and those employees would add costs to our coverage as well. So once we get more final figures, hopefully we'll be able to share those as part of the budget book. But again, it's so early in the process, and getting any of that narrowed down has been a little bit difficult. On a good note, we do have, and we are seeing our capital budget and debt services decrease. So we did not go out for any additional debt, so we don't have that much. We were able to decrease our debt services administration line item. And we also had our short-term bands fall off this fiscal year. So we will only have the Center Street land purchase and the fire truck purchase as part of our debt allocation. And the only other larger items is obviously the school. So we have the addition to the Penntucket. And then we have, excuse me, addition to the Bagnell as well as the renovations for the new middle high school and some of the smaller items such as the green, I forget what the title is, but some type of green initiative in order to get the boilers and everything up to code. So that was a good sign, so we were able to decrease some of our debt services allocation. But other than that, those are just some brief updates in terms of the budget. And at the next meeting, I hope to have some more finite details to share with you as well as the finalized budget book that will be the topic of the finance board next meetings for the next two months or so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone have any questions or issues? Rebecca?
On the budget book, can we, we can just have a digital copy of it?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Kathy wants a digital copy. Jason, do you have any, anything for Town Administrator?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, moving right along.
You don't want to ask us?
I thought I asked Mark and you. No?
I shook my head, I'm good.
I'm stripping gears tonight, huh? I need more coffee.
I'm good.
Edward?
I'm good.
I mean, you know, I'm not sour grapes because you didn't vote with me on the other issues here. It's nothing to do with it. Mark?
I just like to be asked.
All right. I don't know what I'm doing tonight. Older unfinished business. Now, Selectmen's time.
It's that time of year.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Go ahead, Kathy.
And yes.
Start off the holiday cheer.
Holiday cheer. No, it is a great time of year. I know I have my youngest son up visiting from Pennsylvania, so it's great. We're doing all kinds of family things. So I hope everybody else out in town is doing the same. Cancel all your other boring plans and do some fun stuff with your family. And maybe, maybe we'll get a little snow, but I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday.
Here, here. Jason?
Yeah, I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday. And I also'd like to thank the highway department, the light department, police and fire for all the busy work they were doing during and after the storm we had.
Okay. Mark?
No, I'd like to second that. The police, fire, highway department, light department, they had their hands full today and, as always, did an awesome job, so thank you.
Edward?
Thank you. Yeah, I think a shout-out ought to go again to the highway, the light department, fire department, the police department. They did a bang-up job last night and today with the storm. They did a terrific job. We're very fortunate with our electric company. I don't think anybody in Groveland lost any power, and all around us, there was people that lost power in section of the box and in Hable. They do a tremendous job. And I just got one other thing to add for the next meeting. We put on the agenda another discussion on a Whittio Bo tech building. And I know it's been getting a lot of comments from the different towns, and I think we just put it on for a discussion at the next meeting.
No votes? Possible votes?
No, just a discussion.
Sure, I'll do that. I'll do that for you, Ed.
And that's all I got.
All right. Selectmen time, it's my turn. I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and whatever your religious, you know, leanings are or aren't, you know, peace on earth, you know? So it's a good time of the year to reflect on the year gone by, and hopefully going into next year, things improve. I'd like to bring up at the next meeting, other than holiday cheer, I want to revisit the dam.
Yes.
We go from Christmas to the dam. So there was some discussions after the meeting last time about it could be a culvert and it won't have to be inspected by the authorities, you know? It's like, you know, if it's a chairlift, you don't really need an elevator inspector to come and make you jump through a lot of red tape. So, you know, unless anyone objects, I'm going to add the classification of the dam on the next agenda. Is it a culvert or is it a dam? You know, it's, we'll discuss that.
We're going to start the new year off with a dam, huh?
It's going to be, I mean, it's going to be jam-packed, just standard Romoli, so come for the dam discussion on the... What's the next meeting? I mean, is it?
Tuesday, the second.
Tuesday, the second. So it's oddball date after the new year. All right, that's all I got. What's next here? We have, I like Selectmen time to be last. Who made this agenda? It's out of order. Older un-
Dana McDonald made the agenda, it says.
I'm batting like 150 this week. Older unfinished business, you know? So after the holiday cheer, we have Kathy Castren Ellis on the regional, Penntucket regional agreement update.
So the only thing I wanted to just take a second is to just distribute to you the actual definition of enrollment by the state. And that's, that's sort of what I'm pushing for, hopefully in the change of the regional agreement, that we, we stop having this fuzzy definition with numbers.
Was this posted on the open meeting rolls?
What? It says my name.
Oh, it's old business?
It's old business, yes. That's old business.
Oh, I want to read it. There you go.
You should read it.
Do you too?
There you go.
I need new glasses.
Well, at some point, read it.
You gave me seven copies. Say, what are you doing, Kathy?
Give me some more. And whatever.
Life's hard enough, all right?
Okay. So the group, the group that I meet with is not going to meet until January, so there's plenty of time to read it through, and we'll see where this group goes. I don't know that we'll have reached consensus in time for a town meeting vote on a new agreement, but I think it's worth the time to get it done correctly. Have an agreement that we can all agree on and have numbers that we can all agree to as far as the enrollments.
So keep at it.
Yep. Keeping at it.
Hold their feet to the fire. We need definitions and explanations and transparency and governance.
We need the numbers to add up.
Yeah, the numbers should foot and cross-foot, you know? You don't need to be a CBA to know that. Just, you know, one and one is six. So, all right, what do you got? Any old unfinished business?
No, but I think it would, would be nice if we had this before the meeting so that we could read it over, so that we could make a comment on it. If it's going to be put under old business, we should be able to, be able to-
Yeah, so-
Read me four pages before the meeting so we could comment on it.
We have time because they're not going to meet, right? So I'll add it to the next agenda.
It can be on the second, yeah.
We'll digest it, but, you know?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I don't know if you have another scheduled meeting, but-
No, we're not meeting until into January at some point.
Well, hopefully they pick the ball up because I'm not so sure that, you know, they answered any of your questions at the last meeting. I wasn't there, but-
But our Town Administrator also goes to another meeting, and that may make more movement.
Rebecca has more clout.
She does.
You're just an elected official.
That's all.
So we need these, these are important things. You brought them up, and I support you on it. And we need, we need, we need them addressed, not, not avoided, not dismissed. So that's what I hope. I hope the other, the other towns will sit together and there's a meeting of minds and good faith in dealing, and we address the issues that we have concerns about. I hope that happens in, in the new year. And I'll add that to the next agenda. Anyone else have any older unfinished business? Jason, anything you want to talk about?
No, I'm good.
Mark?
Good.
Nothing here. Other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting. Anything suddenly, suddenly come up?
Nope.
From the Brady Bunch. Something suddenly came up. Mark?
I'm good.
Edward?
I'm good.
Jason? I already asked you. Nothing. Correspondence, just FYI, if anyone wants to read it, we have it in a package. Housing production plan update, public engagement meeting Tuesday, December the 19th at 6:00 And we have Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from November the 20th for review. And-
That's it?
Our next scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be on Tuesday, not Monday, Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2024, at 6:30 PM. So that's all we have for this evening, as there are motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Again, there had no discussion. All those in favor?
Up.
Roll call.
Our roll call, we got a roll call out. Jason, you want to end the meeting?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Yes.
Mark?